Alright, so we're here to continue the CA endorsement interviews and this time we're here for District 7. And I'm gonna start this Q and A with the straightforward question given to every set of candidates, and that is, what prompted you to run for the office and what do you hope to do if elected? I'm gonna start with John Richard left.
My name is Will Richardson. I'm running for City Council District 7. And what prompted me to run was, we have seen what improper leadership looks like within our community. District 7 is in a very disorganized and disarray manner. Right now, it needs full-time attention. That being said, I'm in a position through my business, which allows me to be on the ground full-time to address those needs. As I continue to peruse the community, they all have the same concerns with equal housing, affordable housing, crime reduction, and opportunity. And so, I feel like I'm the best candidate for that opportunity to meet those needs and see that we move forward as a community.
Thurston, same question for you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to appear before you today. My name is Thurston Smith. I'm a candidate for Memphis City Council, District 7. Little bit why I'm running, if you knew anything about my background, my track record of public service, it would be logical for me to run because I have a long track record of service on the federal, state, county, municipal level. Long track record of service, working and managing nonprofits, and some, a little bit of business experiences as well. Like my counterparts, there is obviously a vacuum and a need of competent, leadership competent, public service within the community. District 7 has very beautiful parts of the district, and it's got sections of the district totally on the opposite end. A stark comparison in quality of life between key areas within the community. And I can give an example of that, if you made a comparison and contrast between Harbertown, Mud Island, with that of key areas in North Memphis and Frazier as well. Our policy platform focuses on three core policy areas: quality of life, economic development, and health and safety. That's logical because that is the charge and mission of Memphis City Council, which is a 13-member legislative body that is charged with improving the quality of life, economic development, and health and safety through the enactment of policies. And public policy should be centered around two areas: either resolving problems or preventing problems. And we have some challenges ahead of us. Looking at it from a lower category or subcategory, our policy platform, through the series of focus groups that we've held since we've launched our campaign, focuses also on three areas: what's happening in the district that shouldn't be, what needs to happen within the district that is not, and what the city needs to do more efficiently. So, that third area, that third tier focus focuses on city efficiency surrounding city services. I also am the only candidate that's in this race that ran four years ago.
So you all have both referred to in your opening statements, a vacuum of leadership in District 7. Can you further explain what you mean by that?
Well, certainly. You both, by the way, whatever question I ask, you both get to explain. Okay, yeah, absolutely. As you look over the entire district, we have a very diverse district, you know, from the affluent and more successful outlook from Harbertown that moves into more impoverished areas within our communities such as New Chicago, Frazier, North Memphis. Most of the attention that the incumbent is currently focused on has been downtown and in the Harbertown area. As you continue to move forward and you move into the more impoverished areas, those areas really can't tell you who the city council person currently is. They've never met him, they've never seen him, nor do they know any of his platform or his desires to improve the community. That being said, I think that the people, the majority of the people in District 7 feel that they've been abandoned as a community, and so they're looking for a true leader at this moment to take the baton and begin to help all people in our community. And I'm that council person that can do that.
Same question.
Well, kind of interesting, and I would not argue anything that my colleague just said. One interesting thing is both Mr. Richardson and I both served in armed forces, and there's a particular acronym that we use when it comes to servants not being present, and that acronym is MIA. So, the representative has been missing in action. And I don't believe that the citizens of the community are expecting a representative that is going to fix all their woes, all their problems, but they do expect a representative that's gonna be transparent, a representative that's gonna be accessible to them, and a representative that's going to be on the job. And so, we are missing those three key areas within the community. I will also take it a step further by saying, even throughout the race, and I think you referenced this in your earlier question, Mr. Russell, even during this race, I've had the opportunity to meet people, obviously, that I've never met before, and we have some wonderful people throughout the district. And they are interested in a representative that provides them an opportunity, provides them opportunity for access, access to, and that access can look several different ways. For one, returning the phone call. So that's been a recurring complaint as it relates to the current representative. Secondly, residents and stakeholders within the community are looking for a representative that will at least respond to what their requests are, even if they don't necessarily have the wherewithal or the means or resources to resolve. But they're looking for, presence is so critical in this race. And as someone that is recently retired from the Department of Veterans Affairs, after 20, 20-plus years of service to the United States government, someone that serves on a variety of community boards, on the municipal, county, and state level, I have ample enough time to be present for members in the community. I have demonstrated that in a variety of ways, and I'm ready to hit the ground running.
First question, we're gonna dive into some of the issues here. First question, I'm gonna start with you Thurston to come across. Let's deal with poverty, and particularly the issue of youth poverty is 40 percent in Memphis, and we have an issue with opportunity of those from 16 to 24 who neither have a job nor are employed. The word opportunity is used because they have the opportunity to fall into poverty or a life of crime or something else. What things would you do to address youth poverty and generational poverty?
Well, that's a great question. Since launching our campaign, we have held a series of formal and informal focus groups. We wanted to do something both creative, meaningful, and innovative wherein members of the community are quite familiar with individuals who are running for office, politicians, if you will, running for office, telling voters what they're gonna do. And so, we wanted to take an entirely different strategy. So, we made a decision to hold informal and formal focus groups wherein we can get information from members of the community, community stakeholders, and have them tell us what they wanna see happen within the community. So, one of those things is we want to establish a community-oriented public safety program. We want to place counselors within all of the community centers. And I'll give you two examples, Dave Wells in North Memphis, and Ed Rice in Frazier, for example. And I'm gonna tell you where we're gonna get the money from, or at least propose where we're gonna get the money from. We're going to use, we're gonna propose utilizing confiscated property seizures from crime-related seizures. We wanna use confiscated drug monies where we can supplement that funding to fund at least two full-time behavioral health specialists, council, counselors, associate, or social workers within these communities. We want to pursue funding from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Department of Justice through the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Programs, and there are several grants that flow throughout the cyberspace throughout the year through the Department of Education. Secondly, we want to establish school-to-work initiatives. I know a little bit about both of these things. For one reason, I am a field reviewer and technical consultant for the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, specifically as it relates to grants in mental health, crime prevention, and homelessness and subsubuse. Secondly, I'm also a teacher, I'm a professor at Southwest Tennessee Community College in counseling. We want to establish partnerships, memorandums of agreement between city government, post-secondary colleges like Southwest, University of Memphis, to establish training and educational programs that cover both blue-collar workers and white-collar workers. We want to not just help individuals acquire job skills development, jobs training, employment skills building, but we want to create pathways that will allow them to transition from these training and educational programs into employment. And for one example, I also believe that we have missed several opportunities. For example, the University of Tennessee Health Science Center has a biomedical program. I don't know for the life of me why the city of Memphis doesn't establish partnerships with the University of Tennessee to create pathways for students within high school to begin entering into these training programs. And likewise, that would work just as well with schools like Southwest Tennessee Community College. So, we want to establish school-to-work training initiatives for both young adults and adults.
Same question.
Yes, sir. I think what we need to get back to is the basics. That's been part of my platform as I go out throughout the community. And what we have is a systemic situation, they have created poverty, and this goes back a while ago. When I was in high school, went to Tresman High School, and across the street we had vocational, technical school. That program was eliminated, and what they did was, it prevented people who weren't college-bound the opportunity to move into a situation where they can be skilled, schooled with a skill set or a trade to make them a productive member of society. So, what I'm asking to do is to partner with the Shelby County School Board to see how we can re-implement that program so that children and young adults have that option whether to take the college preparatory route or to go into a skill set. That way, when either party leave across the graduation platform, they're able to get into an opportunity that allows them to be productive members of society immediately. If we do that, then we automatically lower crime because people who have jobs don't commit crimes so much. Also, it just allows people to be responsible and have a sense of self-worth once they leave high school. Could you imagine leaving high school and really not having a game plan because college was not your option or the military was not your option? If we reinstate that, then we create jobs. Another part of that that helps out is that when we do have these jobs that come into Memphis that we brag about, we have people that are prepared to go to work and opportunities will be there for them to obtain those jobs. What you see right now is that these big corporations come into Memphis, and they say they're looking for employment, but the people that they're trying to hire within the city, which is contractual, they don't have those people that have the skill set. So therefore, they reach out to other parts of the community via Arkansas and Mississippi to relinquish those jobs, and therefore, it doesn't benefit the city. So, vocational schools are the key to getting us back on track, to lower poverty and helping those youth and young adults get involved into the community.
Next.
And there was one piece that I was actually remiss in referencing as it relates to poverty. Although there are a variety of causes and indicators of poverty, one that's particularly important as it relates to the disadvantaged and the impoverished communities and communities of color is also involves mismanagement of resources. There's a lot of trauma within the African-American community, lots of trauma, lots of pain, there's also drug abuse. So, it's not just about giving people a job, it's about teaching them financial literacy, teaching them literacy, teaching them both soft and hard skills, teaching them the importance of a strong work ethic, the importance of being to work on time, and this is precisely why I want to, I'm a strong proponent of us having behavioral specialists, and councils are also educators as well. So, it's not just about resolving problems, but it's about taking a preventative approach to dealing with members of the community.
That kind of approach has become very popularly known as the wraparound.
Wraparound services, that's correct.
That's a very popular thing. My next question deals with issue of crime. Everyone who's come before us, this board has talked about crime as the number one or number two, depending where you live, issue, mostly number one is lands, the issue in Memphis. And I wanna deal first with my crime and our murder rate for this year is probably a part of hit 200 in the city of Memphis. That's lower than the 2016 record number, but it's still a war-assembly high figure for this city, and violent crime also remains high in many communities, including parts of District 7. How would you address that? What would you do to deal with the crime rate now? Start first with you Thurston.
Okay, well, as a member and graduate of the Memphis Police Department Police Clergy Academy, I have a little bit of that data. And the majority of violent crime that's committed within Memphis is committed between people that know each other.
Domestic.
Well, yes.
Domestic, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but they're not necessarily partners, but it could be like you're a friend of mine.
Yeah, right, exactly.
And so, this kinda goes back a little bit, Mr. Russell, to the comment that I made about as relates to developing programs and establishing initiatives within the underserved disadvantaged communities. And I kinda know this a little bit from the heart because I'm a counselor. I've been in counseling and mental health field for over 25 years, that's what I teach, that's my, it's my trade craft, and it's the area that's gotten me involved in public policy more broadly. People are suffering. Folks would do better if they knew better, and so folks are lacking skills. And it's not, we hear people often speak about economics, which is obviously is important. I mean, I need to have a job even though I'm retired. But folks need to know how to be able to manage day-to-day life stresses. I mean, even myself, sometime I encounter things where I gotta step back and I gotta reach out to folks and get people's opinion because, you know, life is capable of throwing you a curve ball. But we have people in, and much of this is also tied to education, but we have people that are suffering and end up making very bad decisions in part because either they're fearful of losing something, or fearful of something being taken away, or they don't have the resources to manage their lives. And so, having opportunities within the community, having opportunities, and you know, and even as a minister of the clergy, I'm involved in programs that, you know, deal with stress management, domestic violence, coping skills development. And so, we cannot have enough of those types of programs and initiatives within the community. And obviously, we also talked a little bit about jobs and how employment is so important. And I wanna push, although the fight for 15 began in New York at a New York City McDonald's in 2012, I wanna push beyond that. Folks need more than jobs, folks need, or at least jobs that will sustain them, jobs that lead to long-term careers. So, I think it's, all of these things are interrelated, and I am prepared to take a collective approach in addressing all of these things, and obviously, crime being one of those. But I think crime is in part subsequent to economics and also subsequent to poor coping skills.
Well?
Same question. Yeah, and that, I think it's, may sound funny, but I think it's quite simple. We need to re-establish community, neighborhood associations within our communities. I'm a product of Frazier, Janus Road in Hollywood. I've seen my neighborhood, my neighborhood was pretty bad when I was growing up. It's even worse now, and there's a breakdown of communication within our neighborhoods. As we spoke previously about the opportunities that need to be addressed as far as skill set and trade, which would definitely lower crime, but we also have to begin to work with each other and begin to know our neighbor. A lot of times, you know, when I walk through the neighborhoods, neighbors don't know neighbors. They don't speak to each other, they don't communicate with each other. If we were to re-establish and hold accountable our communities, to establish these neighborhood watches, meet, have block parties, begin to have dialogue with each other, crime will continue to lower in that facet. It's also about reaching back and teaching the youth on how to handle, as Mr. Smith said, you know, the stresses of life. There will be times where you'll be angry, but how do we handle that? And I tell people, you know, will this matter in five seconds? Will this matter in five minutes? Will this matter in five, you know, hours? And the answer is no, then we have to de-escalate that problem. So, it's really about having, and that's what we need, and that's what we're lacking in District 7, is a representative that has the time to do that type of lead work. It's not about just sitting down in City Hall every other Tuesday at 3:30. It's about really rolling this leaves up, getting out to the community, and holding these young men and women accountable, having dialogue with them, and letting them know that you're gonna walk with them through this process because it is a process. And as I tell people, once I'm elected, I don't have a magic wand in my car to wave over the city to fix crime, but I'm ready to get dirty and get into the trenches with the people of District 7 and to begin to have dialogue to cross that bridge of crime.
So let's get into the trenches now on economic development. And let's start with a question for you, Will, that's on the use of pilots and tax increment finance and other tax incentives to do projects in Memphis. This has been a lightning rod in some communities that we'd imagine, including District 7, parts of District 7. How would you approach the use of incentives to do projects, and how would you try and do kind of linked projects? Are you linking something from your district to yours, your district to communities that are more well-known?
Yeah, right. So, with the pilot programs right now, we're gonna have to restructure those a little bit to make sure that, one, when we give these big companies the tax breaks that they need to come in to, you know, be able to produce, that, one, they do on-the-job training, which gives our employees, give the employees the opportunity to have a job and be able to keep that job. We're asking that they also use those resources within our community immediately, and then do outsourcing. And that's what has not happened over the years. We let these people come in, they bring in the jobs, and then they fly people in to take advantage of those situations. We wanna make sure that those companies also give back to the community, give back to organizations, nonprofits that are in that community, so that the community can have its self-worth and be empowered and know that that job or that company, organization is not there just to pump them and bleed it dry, but actually give back. So, as councilman, I wanna make sure that I hold not only the citizens accountable to make sure that they're in position to obtain those jobs, but also make sure that the organizations I have accountable to make sure that those jobs are available to the people that are in the community.
Same question.
So let's take a look at the overall premise and goal behind the payment in lieu of taxes and in tandem with that, the edge board, the economic growth agenda. These entities, businesses, we engage in these public-private partnerships with the overarching goal of stimulating the economy within a given community. Now, in some areas of the city that, you know, that's worked quite well, but, and I think I've responded to this in the questionnaire, but in other areas of the community, particularly in areas like Smoky City, New Chicago, Douglas, High Park, you know, North Memphis and Frazier, where programs such as these are really needed, it's not happening. And so, number one, wherever there's any development, and this is very similar to what my colleague said, where I'm going to propose an ordinance as representative of District 7. Propose ordinance, no development within our community unless those development uses the residents of those communities for employment. Let's try that. We need to create win-win situations. The whole premise behind a public-private partnership, public-private partnerships are great when the research that is done, well in hand and well in advance, the research is proactive, is able to look at what are the costs, what are the cost benefits, what are the cost ratios, who, what, when, where, and why. All we've seen, well, not all, I don't wanna be extreme, we have seen a lot of benefit to business developers and little benefit to the general member of the community, general members of the community, the common person. Secondly, the economic development, the edge board outside of representatives that are appointed to that body from the Shelby County Commission and City Council are generally top-heavy with business executives. So, I would push for them appointing general citizens to these boards, because I'm under the impression that the decisions that they make are sometimes absent of the interests of the common person. So, we wanna see representation on these boards, Mr. Russell, from the minority community. We wanna see greater representation on these boards and commissions that deal with economic development of women, Latinos, members of the LGBTQ community as well. I think if we do that, we will somewhat change the scope because you will have members, you would have a diverse representation on these policy-related boards that will be able to provide their input as relates to where development takes place, how development takes place, and who, and how the stakeholders will benefit from that.
Each of you, if you're elected to this office, and I'll start this question with you Thurston, you would not only become part of a 13-member council, but you also have a larger platform to speak to issues that are important to you. And I wanna know, what would you use your platform for if you're elected? What issues would you trumpet and try to amplify through your position?
Well, as someone that's worked for 20 years with the Department of, with the Veterans Health Administration, Department of Veterans Affairs broken into three divisions, Veterans' Benefits, National Cemeteries, and Veterans' Health. I come from that view of Veterans' Health. And so, I think we have a community that is also suffering in health lines, and you can about guarantee that in the impoverished communities. All of those problems are paramount: high rate of HIV infection, high rate of mental health issues, that includes major depressive disorder, depression, high rate of subsubuse. We also know that incarceration, there's a direct link between those, between mental health subsubuse and criminal justice. So, we know there's a relationship there. So, general healthcare, and I serve on the Shelby County Commission Community Health Advisory Committee, and have done some work with Shelby County Health Department. So, I would push for public health initiatives that, and that includes environmental stuff, clean drinking water, sanitation, all of those things. I am just so interested in helping out everywhere I can within the community. So, if you, so, once I get elected to City Council, you could expect me to be up there championing for more programs that are geared toward general health and well-being, yes.
Same question, Will.
Yeah, glad you asked that question. It's about the underdog movement. As you know, my nickname is the underdog. I come from nothing, come from nothing. I was told I'd never be anything. I was told that I couldn't do so many things because of my skin color, you know, what have you. My status in life was designed to limit me to being to where I am today. Once City Council gets a win for the underdogs, for the people who have been counted out, who've been overlooked, and who haven't been included at the table. Now that I'm in the position that I am in 25 years later, when I was 17, I didn't think that I would even see 21. I was living in a very crime-infested area, was just trying to build my way out. I got an opportunity through my parents to start a business, and I've been successful with that for 13 years, employing over 2,500 people in four different states. I'm able to be in a position to give back. And so, I really want to be a beacon of light to those people who have lost hope in this city. People are numb to politics, people are numb to crime, people are, I mean, when you're cutting on the news, it's just darkness. And so, what this city needs more than anything right now is a true hero, somebody who has a testimony to let them know that the system can work with the right teamwork, with the right mindset, focus, and determination. You too, one day, can be city councilman. And that's what I take to heart. I want to reach back into my community and hold those people's hands because people need their hands held in this season. We are in a very rough patch in District Seven, and we've been thrown some doozies. And we need somebody like myself who's not afraid of the people that are in the district that can get involved and walk with them and let them know that it's going to be okay. That it's a process, but it's a process worth taking. And that's what this election is about. It's truly about the people.
This is the last question.
Okay.
You might find that your comment can be incorporated into this last question.
Thank you so much.
So this last question concerns what have you learned about yourself, your district, and the city during this race? And as I said earlier, we'll start with you first on this one, Thurston.
Oh, thank you so much, and thanks for the opportunity. Well, I guess one of the things I've learned is that humility is paramount if you're going to want to be in a position that represents people. And with that comes, you also need to be adaptable and flexible. And so it's been a learning process, it's been a growing process, and I've enjoyed it. But it's also been one heck of a sacrifice. One of the things that I was remiss in mentioning, once I'm elected to city council, outside of going through the formal orientation, because it's a new job and everybody that comes into a new job goes through orientation, but outside of that, the very first thing I'm going to do is a very thorough and comprehensive environmental scan throughout the district. And what I mean by scan, I'm talking about a survey, a needs survey of the district. And although I have been through the district in depth, not just being a resident, but just running and knocking on doors and canvassing, I'm talking about doing a thorough, a very thorough environmental assessment once I get elected and presenting these findings before city council and the mayor and the department heads as it relates to the issues. For example, the puddles, the weeds that are this tall on Smith Avenue, that's city property, that's unattended. The lack of progress at Rodney Baker Park, for example, those types of things. So that's the very first thing that I want to do, that I intend to do once I am elected to this city.
I think I've been to that park before, that's the one on Thursday, is that Rodney Baker? Where's Rodney Baker Park?
Rodney Baker's off James.
That's right. I think I've seen that before.
Yes, please bother us.
Yeah, so same question.
So what have I learned about myself? I've learned that, you know, I've come a long way, I've matured quite a bit. And I wanted to run a couple of years ago, and looking back now, I realize that I was not ready at that moment for the task at hand. That being said, I think that what I've seen and what I've learned within the community is that even though District Seven is a very diverse